The littleton city council of order on September 5th, 2023. City clerk, roll call please.
Mayor Schlechter.
Here.
Mayor Protem Ryden.
Present.
Councilmember Barr.
Present.
Councilmember Driscoll.
Here.
Councilmember Milliman.
Here.
Councilmember Valdez.
Present.
And councilmember Grove is absent. We do have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation, in the name of our liberty and justice.
All right, next item of business is the approval of the agenda. Councils had a chance to review the agenda. Any changes? Seeing none, it's approved without objection. Item four, comments and reports. Turn over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Just a reminder to council and the public that this coming Saturday is the council's annual budget workshop where the draft budget for 2024 will be presented in a good level of detail. The workshop starts at 8:00 a.m. and we'll go through most of the day and geez, this is like two for two that I've had the wrong.
For Mayor Protem, it's 8:00 a.m.
Yeah, yeah. Apparently it starts at 8:30 a.m. and there will be food. So I encourage certainly council to be there, but also the public that it will take place in this room, the council chambers on Saturday. That's all I have, Mayor.
City attorney, any report?
No report. Go buffs.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Just a reminder, hoodlum historic downtown Littleton merchants will be having their monthly meeting tomorrow at 8:00 a.m. at Littleton Town Hall. So come on down and see what's happening with the downtown merchants. We start restaurant week on September 8th. So take advantage of all the good deals that the restaurants have put together for you. So come on out. Also on tomorrow, the 6th, the Littleton Hospital will be having their ribbon cutting for the heart and cardiovascular tower. So as I think most of you know, that's a three-story, 92,000 square foot addition on the backside of the Littleton Hospital. So come on out tomorrow at 11:30 and enjoy the ribbon cutting. Along with a lot of the other council members had the opportunity to attend the epic ribbon cutting ceremony. I imagine some of you were there. Phenomenal facility and really thrilled that the students of Littleton, Arapahoe Centennial, excuse me, Heritage, including Columbine and I guess Sheridan too, have boosted enrollment up to about 800 students. So really exciting. And then just want to thank everybody that came out this summer for the meet and greets. Those were all really well attended and we look forward to doing it again next year. Thanks.
Thank you, Councilmember Milliman.
No report, Mayor, and it is indeed prime time.
Councilmember Valdez?
No report. Go buffs.
Common theme tonight. Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, just wanted to echo Councilmember Driscoll's comments about the epic campus opening. It was a really well-attended event. And honestly, I think the thing I really loved about it is that not only were the students there to kind of show off their trades and skills, and my daughter got to ride some virtual construction equipment, which was fantastic. But I think I just wanted to highlight too, how many people from our community came out and that there is still a lot of opportunity to go and volunteer and work with this center. You know, it's a bright and shiny new building, but it doesn't mean anything without the people in the community that support and surround it. So if you have skills, trades, needs in your workforce that you see an opportunity to participate and contribute to the center, the epic campus, I mean, please, please do so. I also want to highlight too, the opening of the Early Childhood Education Center with Littleton Public Schools. Really excited to see that coming together. And I know the students and staff are excited, all the itty-bitty ones. So that's all for LPS. Dr. Cog, the work study, the work session was canceled for this month. However, the Finance Committee did hold a special meeting the previous month, and I think it's germane to the city of Littleton. Dr. Cog's going to be taking a role in this upcoming legislative session to help conduct multiple phases of studies regarding housing and specifically where housing intersects in the Denver metro area with Dr. Cog's primary function, which is kind of transportation planning. So Dr. Cog is gently, slowly weighting their way to be a convenient body around a housing discussion in a much more data-driven way. And it's really exciting to see. So I was happy to kind of be part of that process. And the last thing I want to just say, thanks to the city of Glendale for the Rugby Sevens invite. I went out and attended a few games with my family and had a great time. So I just wanted to pass on my thanks to the city of Glendale. And that's it.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yes, thank you. An update for all of you. So I'm our liaison to the Justice Coordinating Committee for Arapahoe County. So that's made up of our judges, of the DA, of the head of probation, and some other players in our justice system. And they have a racial equity subcommittee meeting that Sheriff Tyler Brown and John Keller, who is our district attorney, they are co-hosting it. And the goal of this is to kind of look at sort of the justice system policies and just kind of being open to community members. That's going to be on September 27th at 6:30 p.m. And that is at the Second Chance Center, which is in Aurora. Eighteenth Judicial is also adding another court magistrate. And this is going to help with bond hearings. So this is going to be kind of a way to streamline the process. Currently, they're sort of spread out. And then they, Arapahoe County has been working on a housing project with Brothers Redevelopment. It's going to be 60 apartments. It's a really exciting project. It's really going to be geared toward folks who are exiting out of the justice system because we know that contributes a lot to folks who are unhoused and to addiction and mental illness and crises. And that's going to be hopefully breaking ground in Aurora. They're working with some of the zoning folks in our colleagues in Aurora to make that happen. But they've got the financing in place. And it's going to include services and wraparound support and things like that. So that's all coming down the pipeline. And then next week, I've talked a little bit about some of where we've settled on the opioid settlement money, since I'm also our liaison to that group. But we're going to go into more detail in a study session next week. So I will bring you those details then.
Thank you. I got just two items. First, I met with our representative, David Ortiz, trying to chat about some legislative items coming up this future session here. One of the things that he mentioned was items from Senate Bill 213. Some of those ideas will likely be coming back to the legislature, but broken up in different pieces. He was eager to hear from the elected officials in his district, including Littleton. So me and our council members, so we need to coordinate with staff, so to talk with the city manager and his team to, let's try to figure out how we can help our legislators understand what would be beneficial for our municipal governments, kind of in that realm of state policy, land use policy, things that we can, that we could work with or things that are, you know, not what we want. So that would be one thing there. And the second is, I just want to let everyone know that there's a vintage baseball game at the museum this Saturday. It is the Littleton Rough and Readies playing against the Star Baseball Club of Colorado Territory. So this game is a fun example of baseball from the 1860s. It's 1864 rules and uniforms, which is a great thing. I was at it, I think it was last year. Bring the kids, family, go check it out. It's, it's, might be more exciting than the Rockies. That's all I have. Sure.
Speaking of announcements, next weekend, there's going to be a chalk sort of festival in downtown on Main Street. So there'll be tons of chalk artists starting on Saturday, and prizes will be awarded on Sunday. So just take a walk downtown and check that out because I think it could be really cool. And that's next weekend.
Thanks. Next up, item five, scheduled appearances. We have no scheduled appearances. Item six, proclamations. We have zero proclamations tonight. Item seven is public comment. Public comment is a time for the community to come and express opinions regarding issues that are not part of any public hearing on tonight's agenda. We expect comments to be civil, disrespectful, or disruptive behavior will not be tolerated. Each speaker will be limited to three minutes. When you approach your time, I will let you know. Council is not authorized under covered or open meeting laws to discuss, comment, or take action at this meeting on the issue raised by public comment that is not part of tonight's agenda. I may refer matters to the city manager or attorney for immediate comment or to staff to get back to council. I'll go through the list of people that have signed up and then offer a chance for anyone else that didn't sign up. First person we have is Pat McCall.
Yes. My name is Pat McCall. I've been a resident and homeowner in Southbridge neighborhood, coming up on 30 years. Boy, Littleton is not the same as it was. In reference to the city of Littleton final agenda, I have grave concerns over Agenda Item 8B, Ordinance 192023, the mineral business improvement district. It's page 49 in the PDF file, project overview, bullet number four, where the developer references residential property may not be located within a BID, so future special districts may be formed to serve the residential phases of the mineral project. The risk to the city of a new special district for this Lumen site needs more analysis. Consider other alternatives with the pros and cons. The city council needs to have a study session on the financial implications of this agreement. I ask a council member to pull the mineral BID from the consent agenda and vote against approval of the first reading. There is no description of how the Lumen property is to be developed. The developer is obligating the city to financial obligations that have no limits. To avoid repeating mistakes done at Littleton Village, where the financial burdens have gotten in the way of Littleton Village's success and obligated the city to developer errors such as sinkholes need to be avoided. The city council should make its decisions with consideration for the next 40 city councils. And that is because those decisions will impact the citizens for the next 60 years. When you build this real estate, it isn't going to get torn down in five years. I live in Southbridge. Our exit from that neighborhood is mineral at Broadway. The planning commission just approved 300 units in Littleton Village. If you don't think that's going to have an adverse effect on the traffic on Broadway, and now the Lumen, I heard from the residential developer, he wants to build another 300 units. That has been zoned for commercial industrial forever. It helps employ Littleton citizens. We should be looking for other businesses to occupy that area rather than doing another mixed use.
Thank you, Mr. McCall. That's your three minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Next up, Paul Bingham.
Thank you. Before I get started, I'd like to talk about Geneva Village. But before I get started on that, there's a big deal coming up here. An annual big thing on Sunday that hasn't been mentioned, the gigantic car show at ACC, the concours, probably 400 really neat cars out there. You need to know that. I think it costs a whole $10 to get in. So Geneva Village. I took a walk through Geneva Village this morning. It's a really, really pleasant place in which to walk, kind of a serene, peaceful, peaceful place. And what I'm going to do tonight is ask you to, when your vote comes up in a couple of weeks, please renovate and vote to renovate and improve Geneva Village. It could be, it certainly need improvement of the grass needs, grass needs watering, trees need watering. But it could be increased a bit. There's a lot of vacant land around there. Anyway, well, so why am I asking you that? Well, I've been thinking about this whole thing. It occurred to me, Geneva Village isn't just some little development off in the boonies somewhere. It's right smack in the middle of our town square. There's a map that I've distributed. I'm not going to talk about it, but it's just there for the heck of it. Geneva Village is a small part of a larger parcel that is our town square. It contains our city hall, police department, fire stations, and now Geneva Lodge, which contains city offices. So thinking about that, if you guys vote to sell that, there's a chunk, probably 25% of our Littleton town square that simply goes into an unknown use, at least sort of unknown, certainly not going to help it as a city square. The land on, that Geneva Village sits on, is worth a whole lot more to the city than just its monetary value. And it's worth a ton of money, but it's worth a whole lot more than that to us as a city. In the distant future, Littleton is going to need to expand because the city is expanding. The government's going to expand. Well, guess where they'd probably like to expand to? It's on the land that's right there in.
That's your three minutes, Paul. Thank you.
God, that went quick.
Time flies and you're having fun, huh? All right. Next up, we have Dave Mitchell.
Good evening. Good evening. Under a blanket approval from part of the legal team of Littleton, I made a site visit today. And I visited Geneva Village. To the city manager, I'd like to pass on what I've learned. Silver maples are a river-bottomed tree, which means they need a very moist soil. Several of them are dead. All the rest of them are close to dead. The grass is not green, and even if the grass was green, that wouldn't be enough for a mature tree. They have controlled the kirmes, but it's obvious that the city has absolutely given up any kind of care of silver maple. They also need iron. And if you add some sulfur to the iron granules that you put on the soil, the sulfur will release the iron that's in the soil. But I'm not sure what's going to happen with Geneva Village and if it gets developed or some of the trees going to still be there or whatever. But they have been badly neglected. And this is actually a problem with the whole, I don't think anybody in the city of Littleton residents know either that it is a river-bottomed tree. Not quite a cottonwood, but close. Okay. I would like to see Geneva Village stay. If it's a function of money, possibly we can get some volunteer work. I'll give you an example of my experience with community. A few years ago, a woman, both physically and financially, was distressed. Her property was terribly overgrown. Code was contacted by a neighbor. Code contacted a bunch of volunteers, asked us if we would be willing to clean up the property so that she wasn't given a ticket. Assessment was done. 18 of us showed up, cars up and down the street, chainsaws, pole saws, loppers, rakes, bags, lawnmowers, and so on. 18 people volunteered. So instead of getting a ticket, her property was cleaned up. But by golly, partial way through, late morning, who calls up but the meniacs, the bad, bad, bad people called code enforcement, now called code compliance. And I like that title a lot better. And Frank Pascoe shows up, and I said, Frank, what are you here for? And he brings this giant cooler out of his vehicle that's filled with water.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell. That's your three minutes.
Oranges, gloves.
Thank you, Mr. Mitchell.
And that's community.
Next up is John Marquette.
Hello, my name is John Marquette. I live in District Four. I'm here to talk about Geneva Village. Geneva Village needs to be saved. Geneva Village has much to offer. As part of the gateway to the city, it defines historic Littleton with its town square appeal, calming open space, and its mid-century modern architecture. It is a senior affordable living, affordable housing option that only the city can offer. Keeping this asset strengthens the city's credit rating and is a reserve option for future city councils and generations for the next 50 years. With this in mind, redevelopment would be a net loss to the city in the long run. A vote to save Geneva Village is a vote for Littleton's fiscal future and historic character for years to come. Renovate Geneva Village's community. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Karen Talentire.
Hello. What is the better security guard for a building? Someone who makes a predictable circuit of the building or someone who shows up anywhere, anytime? Of course, it's the unpredictability of being checked up on that keeps people honest. So we should all be glad that there is now a device for citizens to passively monitor and report on election networks. Of course, such a device should never actually find anything. We've all been told that election machines aren't connected to the internet because everybody understands the problem with them being connected to the internet. So, fine, they're not connected. Well, let's find out. This device detects all internet routers and access points and any devices to which they connect. It does not hack anything. Anyway, election machines can't be hacked, right? It is just a passive device detecting the signals from the machines and not interfering with any normal network operation, much like what your phone does. It doesn't even have to be in the building, just somewhere nearby. Of course, there would be a lot of signals coming from the Arapahoe County building. So you can filter by type of device and strength of signal to see where the signals are coming from. You can find out information on a specific device, such as its address, when it was first detected and the hardware vendor. And then this election monitoring device collects the information and sends it in, and the information gets broadcast so Littleton could watch local election crimes happen in real time. And the information is securely archived for future analysis. Some of us were watching Wi-Fi signals with our phones in 2022, as you or anyone could have. But we didn't have a good way to use this information to send it to anybody who might want to know. But now I or anyone can be somewhere near an election center, any of them, and record this information. And everyone in Littleton can see whether Arapahoe County really secures our election information. Maybe the council will get some calls about why our election machines are connected to the internet and why you didn't know about it. Or not, maybe I won't be able to get one of these devices in time for this fall's election. There are higher priority elections in other places. But I won't know till then, so you certainly won't know. Maybe all the machine's internet capability will be turned off for this election. If so, good, that's how it's supposed to be. I wonder if internet-free results might surprise some people, though. Or maybe this is the time for you to decide. Littleton elections need to be simple and transparent. Clean voter rolls, in-person elections on one day, ID-checked, paper ballots handcouted at the precinct level. There are many models already being tried out across the country, which I can point you to. At least look up the Texas Mock election at mockcountytx.us and watch the videos of how it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Robert Bram.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. My name is Robert Bram. I'm in District Two. I live on Crocker Street between Powers and Littleton Boulevard. Wanted to echo some of the comments. You've already heard about Geneva Village, but kind of on a broader scale, I want to talk about what is going on within the planning of the community. Geneva Village, we all know, has problems. It's going to be, if it is to be saved, it's going to need a financial commitment. It's going to need a labor commitment. It's going to need some serious work. But at the same time, we are seeing a change in the entire structure of the downtown Littleton area. If you look at what's going on on Curtis Street, where all the new big white blobs are going up on the west side of Curtis, where the old house that is at the corner of Powers and Curtis on the southeast side, next to Graceville, is going to be torn down. This is a historic home, and they're going to put up an office building. On my block, we have seen two very large, 4,000-square-foot homes go up and completely take away the views that we had in our historic neighborhood. The history and these buildings created a charm and a desirability which created value and brought people to this area. It's well documented that downtown Littleton did a lot more to save itself previously than, say, downtown Englewood and some of the other areas. What is happening now seems to be a shift in favor of development, and it is, much of it is tasteless development and has nothing in common with the historic character. I come back to Geneva Village, and obviously, as I said, work has to be done there. I hope it will be done in a managed and tasteful manner to preserve the character of the area. It is a value that is beyond money in terms of rebuilding it. There are many aspects of downtown that have created the community that we know and love. And I just want to really emphasize we're seeing too many changes too quickly that are destroying what built Littleton and made of the desirable community we all know and love. Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, Pam Chadbourne.
Good evening, council. My name is Pam Chadbourne. Excellent speakers tonight, and I agree with both the problem with the mineral bid and the comments in favor of Geneva Village. So the mineral bid, I'm just going to ask you, please remove it, continue it to the future. I realize they're coming here now at the last minute to get approval for an election, and that is not justification to do it. Staff had this for two months. You know, staff had the rocket on the river for 20 months, and they've had this for two months. And why is it coming now? There, the developers' point of view is well expressed here, and the city's point of view is not present at all in this presentation. Bids present a risk to the city. And the addition of the residential later is a weird new twist that needs to be explicated. Council, you are our representatives. You are the people who can ask staff to analyze what that risks might be. What are the scenarios for doing a bid and then suddenly pulling that back and adding residential? What are the possibilities? Why isn't this a metro district for also? There's a lot of questions here that you, council, are responsible for asking and getting staff to answer. So please, get rid of this bid, table it, let the election chips fall where they may. Now, two items here, and one of them, the Eugene Sternberg in Littleton, I've passed out before. We should have a place where I can put this and it would be projected on the screens so that everybody can see this. So the other thing that I've added is Littleton's town square concept. And this could or should have come from staff as a scenario in which the preservation of Geneva Village supports the community values. supports the community values and the city benefit. Should have been, but here it is. And so roughly in time order from the top down, this is all about the river. When people came here to try to make a living, they were around the river, and then Slaughterhouse Gulch, just a little tributary, there was probably a little farm there. But the city ditch in eighteen sixty-one to seventy created the opportunity to farm that land, and they did. And that, within a decade, created the need for a mill, which you actually heard referred to. The rough and readies are from the mill, and that's just off this map. And then the farms were there, and then the Geneva Association came and bought the farmhouse, the lake, the park, and did their own story, which I don't have time to go into here, and then the city bought it. In one seventeen-acre parcel is a hundred years of history. Folks, we have a huge opportunity here, which we must not lose. Thanks for listening.
Thank you, Ms. Chadbourne. That's all that we have signed up for public comment. Is there anyone who didn't sign up that wish to speak?
Good evening, City Council. My name is Frank Atwood, and I live in the Fourth City Council District. I, too, am opposed to the bid and B, which is on the consent agenda, and hope that it gets pulled and discussed far further with questions such as Ms. Chadbourne has mentioned. I'd like to discuss general business B, if this is an appropriate time for it, Mayor. Is this an appropriate time? Thank you. Okay. With regards to B, in my mind, the question is, what is the optimum size of government? Taxes are like the insulin that preserves a civilized society and controls diabetes. Granted, taxes are necessary. The question is to optimize the level so as not to descend into either a doom loop that some predict for California cities nor blow up into anarchy. With regards to the diabetes analogy, too many of us have sugar-high lives, and now thanks to modern medicine, we can control it with insulin. Taxing entities do not have that immediate remediation response. Tabor is the nagging spouse. Again, tabor is the nagging spouse that keeps our municipalities fiscally healthy. None of us like it, but it works. The city needs to decide on its priorities. I'm grateful for the pedestrian crosswalk at Alamo and Begah Park. I'm also waiting to see when the alley behind the post office will be repaired. Again, I'm going to say, tabor is the nagging spouse that keeps our municipalities fiscally healthy. None of us like it, but it works. Perhaps rather than being a nagging spouse, it's the in-law, parental in-law that is concerned about her grand, her or his grandchildren rather than the immediate sugar-high. Thank you.
Thank you, Frank. Is there someone else that would wish to speak in a public comment? Please come down if you state your name and address or district.
Hello. Hi, my name is Marie Stucker. I live at eight zero one Shadycroft Lane, and I forget the exact address. But I'm here to talk to you about an issue that's come up down my lane. It is a lane. The status, we've had no parking down our street for over forty years. There's two no-parking signs with arrows going towards the stop sign and all the way down our cul-de-sac. And for forty years, everybody understood it meant the entire cul-de-sac. It's a long street. There's a lot of homes down our street, our lane. But now it's in jeopardy because of one mom who found a supposed loophole to park down our lane. And she has her son, Heritage High School student, parking down our lane. And it's happening because Heritage High School is overflowing with their parking. They also have a no-sophomores rule. Just the upperclassmen are allowed to park in there, plus the church across the street is no longer allowing parking across the street anymore. They had some issues, and the church barred the parking, so left a lot of parents to scramble, looking around the neighborhood to find a place to park for their sophomores. And honestly, a lot of Heritage kids, whatever age, they do not like that parking lot. It's very congested, it's very hard to get out of, and they look for anything to be able to look elsewhere for parking. But there's a young driver who's been parking up to eleven hours every day on our street, on our lane, and like I said, the mother seems to have found a loophole, and the loophole seems to be a map that it shows, for some reason, Shadycroft Lane has been excluded from this map, dealing with no parking permits issues. And even though we've got no parking signs, it's been there for decades. She's, from what we understand, she wants to use this map to dismiss a parking ticket that she did get. The police were very helpful. The police actually suggested that maybe Heritage could carve out a little bit of land for a little more parking, something. They were very helpful, but they did issue that family a ticket. But the police officer said something about maybe we need more, no parking signs further down. It's a lane, it's twenty-four feet wide, it's, there's no sidewalks, there's not a lot of land. We're concerned about getting parking tickets dismissed because if that happens, then it could possibly open our lane up to all kinds of Heritage parking, not just the sophomores. And we need, we're concerned about emergency vehicles, garbage, any kind of vehicle that needs to, we've got a lot of elderly down our street, and even their adult children are concerned about whether or not their parents can have access to proper emergency care. But what we're concerned about is, we did contact Heritage High School, and they don't seem to be very responsive. The parking code special, I think they said something like...
Thank you, that's your three minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else that would wish to speak? One once, going twice? Sold. All right. Thank you, everyone. City manager have any response?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, on several points. First of all, regarding Shadycroft Lane, I want to let the council and the citizens know that, as I spoke with the police department about this issue this afternoon, they are aware of the concern and the kind of the emergent circumstances there, and they're planning to be out with some force in the next few days to patrol and evaluate, you know, whether there are additional measures needed there. Our acting police chief also committed to following up with the high school in terms of information about where that parking can occur. So, the citizens should certainly follow up with the city manager's office if they don't see that kind of presence in the next few days, but I know the police department is committed to working through that issue with you. One speaker spoke to, just referenced in passing, Littleton election crimes, and I know that, you know, we can all have our opinions on our election systems, and I just want to strongly object to that characterization of any of the election activities in Littleton. We certainly have no evidence, we've never, to my knowledge, heard credible evidence that that even could, that anything like that could be happening. We're very proud of our election operations here. They're conducted consistently with Secretary of State and state guidelines and state law, and they are tested by third parties on either end of the election, and we also are, you know, proud of the citizen election judge teams that work in a bipartisan manner to look at and evaluate all ballots. So especially as we get into election season, it's important to note those procedures, even though we certainly respect the rights of those to disagree and advocate otherwise. Just briefly, I want to remind the council and the public that the council will have another, it'll have a public hearing on the Geneva Village direction forward that will follow a full recap of all of the information and presentations that the council has heard in the last year, and that's scheduled for, again, September nineteenth at this time. And then finally, just want to, for the public and the council, remind that if matters, if items pass, if ordinances pass on first reading on the consent agenda, they will receive a full hearing and a presentation at the second reading, so that would pertain to the Business Improvement District proposed for Mineral Avenue. Those are my comments, Mayor.
Great, thank you. City Attorney, do you have any comments?
Yeah, and the city manager is obviously correct. The purpose of first reading is to set the actual public hearing and not to debate the merits of a particular ordinance. With that said, I have had a lot of queries, and we heard a few queries from our, a few comments from the public regarding the potential formation of a Business Improvement District and a potential, I wouldn't say confusion, but equating it also to some of the challenges that Littleton Village has experienced. So, just as a brief primer, if you will, as to what the difference is, as they are relatively, they're similar in terms of their functions. You know, a difference between a metro district and the Business Improvement District has a lot to do with the types of services that a metro district is going to provide, as well as to the funding mechanisms. True, they are both funded with property tax, although a Business Improvement District relies only upon the commercial development. So residential properties are not facing any sort of mill levies or any of that. So as it relates to however that, however it is developed, if it is developed, the Lumen property that we're referring to, none of the residential properties would be subject to any of the mill levies associated with the Business Improvement District. Business Improvement Districts generally have kind of changed a little bit over time, and you see them to certain degrees currently. So, back in the day, a lot of Business Improvement Districts were formed primarily to handle the maintenance that occurred within a development within a location. You see it largely done both ways, but you also see it done to help offset the cost of infrastructure. So in the petition for formation of the Business Improvement District, what the developer has asserted in terms of why they would like a Business Improvement District is to fund some of the infrastructure improvements. So the Lumen property was kind of an industrial-type property where it sits now. In order to develop that property for commercial or residential in the future, you're going to have to demo that building. You're going to have to demo that building, you're going to have to go in, replace stormwater, water, sewer. It's a very large site, it's over forty-five acres, and there's a lot of infrastructure improvements that are going to have to be done to the tune of over fifteen million dollars, just to get something to come out of the ground on that site. So that's why the applicant is petitioning the city to form the Business Improvement District. But I will say, to allay concerns, it is funded solely on the commercial aspect of it, so it has no burden on the residential users, and we can certainly entertain that more during the public hearing, which has now been set for the nineteenth, and we can welcome all these comments back then and explore...
Not yet set.
The necessity for her forming this. I'm sorry.
Not yet set, but...
Oh, correction, sorry. Pending council setting on the nineteenth.
Just one quick question on that. There's no financial obligation from the city as one of the...
The city would not be subject to any of, you know, the finances pursuant to a bid. I will say, another difference between a bid and a metro district is that the city is the one who actually appoints those board members to a bid. The city actually acts as an ex officio board member on those bids, and the city is also the one who approves annually the operating plan and the budget. So currently, we have two bids within the city of Littleton. We have Aspen Grove, which has a bid, and we have Highline, which also has a bid. That's to the south of the South Park area, and both of those seem to have functioned fine within the city of Littleton, although I understand a lot of residents haven't had the same experiences with Littleton Village, but that's a metro district. So, a little different, but we can talk more about it potentially in a couple of weeks if council moves it to a public hearing.
Thank you. All right, next up on the agenda, item eight, consent agenda items. Consent agenda items can be adopted by a simple motion. All ordinances must be read by title prior to a vote on the motion. Any consent agenda item may be pulled at the request of a council member. A, Resolution sixty-one of twenty-twenty-three, approving a license agreement between the Denver Regional Council of Governments, Dr. Cog, and the city of Littleton for the acquisition, preparation, use, and distribution of aerial, digital aerial photography. B, Ordinance nineteen of twenty-twenty-three, an ordinance on first reading organizing the Mineral Business Improvement District, providing for an election of the board of directors, and approving the twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four operating plan and budget for the district. C, Resolution ninety-four, twenty-twenty-three, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement, IGA, between the city of Littleton and the Arapahoe County Open Spaces for the twenty-twenty-three grant award regarding the underpass feasibility of the Highline Canal Trail at Mineral Avenue. D, Resolution ninety-five, twenty-twenty-three, authorizing an intergovernmental agreement between city of Littleton and Arapahoe County Open Spaces for the twenty-twenty-three grant award regarding mineral trail paving project. E, Resolution ninety-three, twenty-twenty-three, authorizing an IGA between the city of Littleton and Arapahoe County Open Spaces for the twenty-twenty-two grant award regarding the Kettering Park and Gallup Master Plan. F, Resolution ninety-seven, twenty-three, authorizing an agreement between the city of Littleton and the city of Inglewood regarding the replacement of a Littleton sanitary sewer line across the Inglewood city ditch. G, I D twenty-three, two oh nine, motion to approve minutes of the August fifteenth, twenty-twenty-three regular meeting, the August twenty-second, twenty-twenty-three special meeting, and the August twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-three special meeting of city council. Is there a motion?
So moved. I move to approve the consent agenda items A through G.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to approve all the consent agenda items. Any discussion, council? See no discussion?
I'd just like to make just a comment. Thank you, Reed, for that explanation on the mineral project. Hopefully that puts some concerns to rest.
All right. Any other comments?
The vote is six in favor, the motion carries.
Thank you. Item nine is general business. First up, I D twenty-three, two eighteen, is update on the candlelight walk in Main Street lighting update. This is just an update for council on things to come in the future and activities that staff has undertaken, so I'll turn it over to the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. We all know that our downtown looks a little different these days and that we are preparing for some major opportunities in the future. Of course, one of those changes has been the removal of the dying trees that were downtown, many of them, not all of them, and we know that that has prompted questions, and staff has been doing as much planning as we can for how to retain the special character of downtown Littleton during the holidays. We know that that's been a hallmark for Littleton, and while we had to take some action on those trees, we have been very aware of the expectation that we keep downtown Littleton festive during the holidays and that we do keep that candlelight walk. So, tonight, council, I know our staff has been working for several months on alternative plans and ways that we can keep Littleton festive during the holidays, and so tonight we just want to share those ideas with you, gain your direction, your support on moving forward, and if you have any ideas, now would be a good time to hear them so that we can deck the halls as we get close to Christmas time. So, with that, if I can stop tap dancing?
I think you have to keep tap dancing. That's going to be part of the festivities.
I might have to start caroling here as we, I don't know if anyone wants that, but...
We're still looking for quality entertainment, if you'd like to be a performer.
Do we not entertain you?
Okay. So at this time, I will hold... So at this time, I will, I'll turn it over to our Economic Development Director, Cindy Perry, who's been working with businesses and others to get ideas and also with some vendors. Our Communications and Marketing Director, Kelly Nardi, who has been, I know, focusing on the candlelight walk, which has been kind of a baby of the cities for a long, long time. No one's not, special to no one more than Kelly. And then Keith Reeser, our Public Works Utilities Director, who works largely behind the scenes, works very hard with his crews to make it all happen for those events. And so with that, I'll turn it over, I think, to Cindy first.
Yes, I get to kick this off. So Cindy Perry, Economic Development Director. So Jim did a good job explaining kind of why we're here. Obviously, we had some diseased trees and that really kind of triggered a change in at least a portion of what downtown might look like. So we'll talk a little bit about our Plan B to liven up Main Street this year for the holidays. And we're going to talk about what is not changing as well. So I'm going to turn it over to Keith to talk about kind of the how we got here and why we're before you tonight.
We cut down a lot of trees. And if you have any further questions on that, I'm happy to answer that. We aren't going to grow any in this next couple of months.
I do have a question on that. Just want to, you know, hearing out in the internet ether that the city has no plan to replace the trees and we're just going to use concrete to pave over everything. Is that the case?
No, in fact, the project, downtown project that's kicking off and is working on the designs for the future of downtown is part of that, you know, things like shade canopy, green infrastructure, all those kind of things, pedestrian amenities are all part of that design process. So I can't tell you exactly what it's going to look like because it's a very community-based project plan. And as we get through that, you'll see all of that and the community will have plenty of opportunity to be a participant in that.
So there is a plan?
Yeah.
Okay, just wanted to confirm that. Great.
The short-term concrete plan is to fill in the holes, which we're taking care of.
And that's just the short-term plan so people don't trip and fall in holes?
That's right.
Okay, just wanted to, good.
All right, so I'm going to let Kelly talk about candlelight and reassure the public that the main festivities are not changing.
Thank you. Thank you. Good evening, council. 2023 will mark the 40th year of the Candlelight Walk, so it's a big milestone for us. We just had the 10th anniversary of the Criterion. Our staff will do what we have always done, is plan a really great holiday evening for everybody in the community. Santa Claus will be the culmination of a really fun night. It starts at 6:30 PM. We'll start up at the courthouse as we always do. We have several of our parade elements already confirmed. We'll continue to do the hot chocolate and hot cider for free, courtesy of Western Welcome Week at Bradford Autobody and in Bega Park. We will have dancing Christmas trees. We have a giant plush Rudolph that will be dancing around. There will be a horse-drawn carriage for city council to ride in that will be lit up. The Littleton Ballet Academy is confirmed for a Nutcracker float. Handsome Little Devils is a group that we've hired for maybe the past 10 years. They bring three different floats. One of them is Santa's Workshop, one of them, I'm not quite sure what it will be, but there are definitely things in the works there. We'll have several holiday-themed food trucks. One is a cookie dough food truck, one is a kettle corn. We've got the live reindeer confirmed. They will be based at Bradford Autobody. We've inquired of the Littleton Business Chamber if they would like to do a float or be involved in the event in some capacity, and we're waiting to hear back from them. That same invitation was also extended to the LDDA. We do also have confirmed that Town Hall Arts Center will have a replica of Town Hall on a float and it'll be lit up for the holidays. We're still working with several bands to get them confirmed. We have a group from Voices West who will be singing. So everything's going to be great as far as the parade is concerned. And we'll still sell 50 cent candles, so we'll hope that we can light up Main Street with the candles as we've always done, and we're looking forward to a good night.
So all good?
Is this thing on? All good news. So with no trees, obviously, we don't, we won't have the twinkly lights. I know that that's been a really special moment for visitors and citizens, you know, as Santa goes down Main Street, the lights turn on. So understanding how important that is, staff has got, put our heads together and tried to come up with some ideas that, you know, at least in some way can mimic that special feeling. So I'm going to talk a little bit about what that plan looks like. We did have some constraints without the trees there. You know, we have limited power, there's limited structures for us to attach to, obviously time and budget. So the trees came out in the spring, so typically when you have a holiday lighting extravaganza, you're planning at least a year ahead of time. So we've done the best with time and budget that we have available. So I want to talk a little bit about how we approached this. We reached out to several lighting companies across the country. This is what they do, and they provided us with some proposals. Those proposals varied in concept, complexity, and budget. Public Works has also submitted a proposal for a portion of the work. And then we had a local business owner that also had submitted an early proposal for a concept, but that was withdrawn. You'll hear later on the presentation that that has resurrected, just in a little bit different form. We decided to go with a company called Decorlite. Their proposal was more complete. The other one was kind of a play-as-you-go, so it would have required a lot more staff time for design and management. So one of the concepts to at least mimic some lighting along Main Street is we're planning on having Public Works decorate the Sternberg poles with garland and lights. We will not have the ability to turn those on individually as Santa goes down the road, but there will be a turn-on ceremony associated with the candlelight walk. The next slide is, we're planning on lighting up Town Hall this year. These are just two options. And all of the options I'm talking about today, we can mix and match to meet our budget. So the option on the left is garland and lights, and then those snowflakes are what we call a gobbo light, and that would just be projected on Town Hall. Another option that's a little bit less expensive and maybe give us some flexibility and some other elements is the light wash. You've seen that at city and county of Denver and on the Capitol Building. So those are two ideas there. And I want to address that we did talk with Community Development and Historic Preservation about the lights for Town Hall, and they've reviewed and determined that it's within, the design that the vendor provided is within guidelines and a certificate of appropriateness would not be required as it would come back to its original state. Another element that we are planning is to have at least one lit selfie station. We're proposing either that frame there or a star. And the reason for that is, is they can be repurposed for other events. So the frame could be rebranded for the Criterion. We could use a star for 4th of July or some other patriotic event. So you can, the lights are LED, so you can reprogram those. We are also have within our budget to do at least one, maybe two sidewalk gobbo lights. And again, these are simply projected lights, can be reprogrammed at a very low cost. So for St. Patrick's Day, we could project clovers or leprechauns or whatever. So it could be repurposed for a variety of events. We are looking at potential sponsorship opportunities for additional gobbo lighting and for maybe one or two other of those selfie stations. They would be branded to whomever the sponsor was and would just zhuzh it up a little bit more to steal Colleen's word there. And then Hoodlum, which had proposed early on as part of our program, has proposed to do their pumpkin poles, but it would be branded in a holiday fashion. In talking with Mr. Ranky, the thought is that these would be on private property and not, not in the public right-of-way and funded entirely outside of the city. But we would work to coordinate with them on that. So some project benefits, you know, candlelight walk returns, it doesn't change, it keeps going. These lights would be on through early January, and the hope is, you know, with the selfie stations and the gobbo lights and Town Hall lit up, that, you know, it could attract additional visitors to downtown. We would track that through year-over-year sales tax numbers. So we would look at last year's, this year's, and should we continue a lighting program? We would monitor that in the future. We're also considering a new software program called Placer AI. And if the city were to enter into that contract, it provides very detailed data on traffic in and out, you know, where, when people come downtown, where are they going after, where are they coming from? So that would be another way for us to track the impact of lighting downtown. We have set a budget of $50,000, so it would be city general fund of $25,000. Economic Development applied for and received a $25,000 grant for the project. There are two options for the lights. We can do a direct purchase, or there is a kind of a lease option-to-buy program, which spreads the cost over two or three years. Given that we have the grant this year, we're proposing to purchase these outright. The proposal includes assembly and removal as well as storage for a year. The storage program, the vendor will hold the product and they take the product back, recondition it, and next year it's like we have brand-new product all over again. If we want to repurpose the selfie station and/or those gobbo lights for other events during the year, Public Works does have some capacity for storing those items. So our recommendation is that we move forward with candlelight walk. There's really no changes to that event or parade. And then move forward with the new extended holiday lightscape through mid-January. I'll go back. And that concludes our presentation, and we're open for questions.
Thank you, council. Questions, Councilmember Villas?
Thank you, Mayor. To the, our Public Works Director, about a year ago, I had asked you, is there a way to string lights, say, from the north, a north building to a south building across Main Street? And you had said that there were some safety issues there. And for the folks that didn't maybe hear that a year ago, maybe you could just remind us what that is?
Sure. Actually, more, two or three years ago, we often get requests and they always, almost come in and request it says, can you make it look like Laramie Square? And so, of course, we investigated that option, and none of the infrastructure from the Sternbergs or any of the lighting that's down there has the strength to support those span wires to make that happen. And the buildings can't do that either. So in terms of being able to do that now, we would have to put in probably a couple hundred thousand dollars in infrastructure just to hold the lights up. So that's why we haven't gone down that path. But certainly, that's something that we'll be considering in the project downtown in the future, to give us a lot more versatility on how we can do stuff like that. It's just something that, you know, those kind of things weren't really planned, you know, a couple decades ago when a lot of that lighting and support went in.
Any other questions, council? No comments, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you for this. Thank you for considering that and that explanation, Keith, because I've also gotten those inquiries as well. So I'm really glad that we're looking into the overhead lighting, because I just think that's really cool and special. I really like the idea of a selfie station, especially one that can be repurposable. I think that's a great way to draw people down and also have like our branding in the back, which I think is really cool for the city. Just personal preference, I think gobbo lights on buildings are really tacky, so my preference would be to stay away from that. I think there is some creativity that can be done with them on the sidewalks. I think actually that can be kind of cool and interactive for kids. Yeah, just adding that preference.
Councilmember Milliman?
Thank you, thanks, Keith, for the explanation too about what was going on with the trees, because there's a lot of misinformation on the internet, as you're well aware. So I appreciate that you re-explained all that. I personally love all of this. I think it's great. I know it's a big change, but to light up Town Hall like that and to really highlight Town Hall, I think is pretty amazing and different. And I'm going to disagree with Gretchen. I think gobbo, gobbo, you know, snowflakes on buildings have actually looked pretty cool, you know, yet there can be some tacky ones, but I think they can probably do it more respectfully or nicer. I do like the selfie station idea. I think that's a great idea because not only is it fun, but people are going to post that on their, on their social media, and that's a great way for us to get a lot of media hits. So I love that idea, I love it. And I did have a question. The budget last year compared to what you're proposing this year, is it vastly different? And also from a staffing resource, is that going to be vastly different since they're not hanging, you know, the lights along the street? How is that going to be changed?
I'll take that one. So historically, what's happened is Public Works crews starting about end of October, coming in at 4 o'clock in the morning to hang lights. Most of the lights actually stay in the, they would stay in the trees throughout the year, but then the electrical connections would change. And so our crews would spend probably about three weeks in combination with the other work that they have to do, coming in early to put the lights up, is how we handled it. You know, each year, we were, you know, we'd have to purchase some new lighting, obviously, as LEDs got better, as well as some changes to the tree that's further on the west end as well. So, you know, for us, there'd be less staff time, you know, other than, you know, doing the garland on the, the garland and the lights on the Sternbergs. But I think for us, it'll be a little, way more efficient. So hopefully, it won't snow during that time. We won't have to use those folks for that, so.
And the vendor in this year's proposal includes installation, so they would do Town Hall. And the rest is fairly straightforward with, you know, placement of the selfie station. And in future years, we would have the option to have the vendor do that work, or Public Works can observe, you know, the, how complex it is to install those items and make a determination to do that work in-house in the future.
Well, thank you. And I know we're all looking forward to having trees back in downtown Littleton again, but there's a lot of changes coming up. So I know we all need to be patient. So I think this is a great alternative, and I appreciate all your hard work on that.
I believe, Councilmember Milliman asks, how much will it cost? I mean, usually in the past, how much did we spend on the candlelight walk versus this year? What's the financial, roughly?
I can't say. It comes out of our event budget, where the Criterion and the Little Jams and all the other events. So I don't have before me right now a budget for the candlelight walk, but it's the same as it has been in the past. We're not increasing our costs. The additional costs are going to come from an additional $25,000 from the city and the $25,000 from that nice foundation in town.
But we do track the individual costs and stuff. You just don't have the data in front of you?
Oh, yeah. Oh, yeah, we have that. I just don't have it with me.
Got it, got it. Okay. Councilmember Driscoll?
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for his presentation, and thank you for bringing this in quite a bit lower than a budget I had seen earlier. Any thought to doing anything with the courthouse? And would that be something maybe Littleton Business Chamber and the DDA would be interested, maybe?
Those giggles would suggest they've talked about that.
I think they must have, and perhaps that's where they can-
We, the three of us actually had an email conversation about that in the last three hours. So we must have been channeling you, Councilor Driscoll. So, yeah, we've, historically in the past, we've done some lighting on the courthouse, and so we'll, we'll look, as we talk with the vendor more and our staff does some work, we'll- And so we'll look, as we talk with the vendor more and our staff does some work, we'll definitely do something to light the courthouse.
Please don't make it a red and green light wash. I think those are also tacky.
I was saying, I like, I like that red and green white wash that was there, so.
Don't do anything else.
This is just like the conversation we had this afternoon.
I liked the light wash. I wanted to provide that feedback very specifically. And in fact, so, yeah, that was one of my comments. And the other one was, could you explain where the grant came from? The matching grant, was that from state, county, private?
That was a local foundation grant.
Local foundation grant? Okay. Well, much appreciation to the local foundation. And that, no, that's all I had. Thank you for all your, your team's hard work on this.
I think you have at least, at least three times as many people that like the red and green light wash. But so you can, you can ignore Mayor Protem's comments about that, so. But just, just wanted to clear another thing up, things that I hear on the internet. This one's directed to Kelly. So Candlelight Walk, still going to happen. It's going to be maybe a little bit different with some of the decorations, but you are not in charge of some global conspiracy to remove all festivities from Littleton?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Just wanted to kind of, wanted to confirm that, you know, we're going to continue moving this forward and it's not, we're not killing the Candlelight Walk and killing these things downtown.
No, the Candlelight Walk will be, just like it's always been, and hopefully even better. Every year, we try to try something new and add some kind of new, fresh element to it. So we'll again try to bring some new and fresh things. In the last couple of years, we added the lighted-up Volkswagen's, which are really cute, if you remember those. So the Candlelight Walk is going to be the same great holiday event it's always been. The only difference is just the lights on the trees. And we do have the large, whatever that tree is, that gigantic blue spruce, maybe, next to the melting pot. That will still be lit up, and I think the Public Works staff hires a professional vendor to light that up. And so we will have the switch on the stage with Santa, and we'll bring some children in from the audience, and they'll flip the switch and light up that big tree too. So we'll still have that big amount of light down at the West End.
Great. Mayor Protem, well, if it has to do with lights on buildings, no, you may not.
My understanding too is that a lot of the merchants that are down there also are really interested in lighting and coordinating amongst themselves and not only being involved in the Candlelight Walk, but also just throughout November, December, and January to keep it a really lively, happening place. Is that accurate, Cindy?
Yes, I have heard the same, and they are self-organizing, almost like a lighting competition. So they would light their own stores up and.
Long as they're not shooting lasers across the street into their neighbors, because I'm assuming there's some safety issues going on with that as well.
I've heard nothing about lasers.
There used to be a window decorating contest in downtown Littleton that the merchants ran, and I think they are trying to bring something back, but make it lighting as opposed to just decorating the windows. So that would be really fun if they did that.
Yeah. Anyone also listening along, Littleton Boulevard wants to get into the decoration game, they can extend the.
Run it by Gretchen first.
Customer bar, you have something else?
Sorry, just one more follow-up question. On the DDA, I was wondering, you know, in terms of their involvement, can you just quickly summarize it? Is there a financial component to it as well? And is that expected to kind of grow into the future as the DDA, you know, increases their revenue?
They have contributed to the pumpkin pole concept, and I would absolutely hope that, you know, their, their contribution and participation in lighting certainly grows in the future. I mean, I can envision this becoming, you know, a really fun lighting festival and don't want to overcommit, but, you know, activating Vega Park with some, you know, interactive walkthrough lighting elements. So, you know, my hope is that it grows, it becomes a larger event, and we've been working with the DDA and keeping them updated on all the plans.
Anything else? Anyone else? Any customer, Mayor Pearl Grinch, I mean Gretchen?
I am trying to preserve the integrity of lighting.
Thank you. It sounds like you have general support for moving forward with this on here, so. Sorry, I had to. Thank you. All right. Item B on general business here, we have Resolution 101, 2023, resolution referring a ballot question to the registered electors. The city of Littleton asking the voters to authorize the city to retain and spend all revenues it has received and will continue to receive relating to the 3A, three-quarters of a cent sales and use tax and expend all taxes, grants, and other revenues received in 2022 in excess of its limitation as stated in the ballot question to continue to fund the backlog capital improvement projects that was approved by the voters on November 2nd of 2021. City manager and city attorney will have, and finance director will have a presentation and fill us in about this that we kind of discussed a little bit last week, so turn it over to you.
Thank you, Mayor, and thanks for the punchline there. That is where we will end up, is that a language that could be considered by council for the ballot. Since the voters approved Measure 3A at the end of 2021, the city has been collecting that revenue and has been following through on commitments made to use that money exclusively for capital projects and maintenance backlogs that the city has, has, has had for many, many years. When you place a measure like that on the ballot, the state law requires you to estimate the revenues, that you make a good faith estimate of what you, you expect to collect in the first year with the new tax. And you'll hear more about this, but the better-than-expected performance of the Littleton economy has put us in a position where in order to be, to remain compliant with that state law, the council has some action to take, and we received direction at your last meeting to bring back some language that would be compliant with the Taxpayer's Bill of Rights to retain that revenue and keep, keep following through on the expectations of the voters. With that, I'll turn it over to our finance director for a little next-level information, summarizing some of the information that the council heard at a study session or at a special council meeting last week, and then we'll look for council's direction on how to proceed.
Good evening, Council. Before you this evening, we have a Resolution 101 dash 2023, and it's related to the taxpayer bill of rights ballot question. Last week, we did have a special meeting so that we could discuss some Tabor issues that we wanted to bring to light. And essentially, as the city manager mentioned earlier, this is related to the November 2021 ballot question for the 0.75% sales tax increase related to infrastructure backlog. At that time, we were required to make two estimates for that ballot question, and one of them is related to how much did we expect to receive from that 0.75% sales tax? And the second one is, what did we expect our fiscal year spending to be in 2022? And the city did exceed both of, both of these estimates. The Measure 3A revenue was over by about 1.1 million, and the citywide fiscal year spending was over by about 4.8, which means we need to make a decision on how we want to address that over to 5.97 million. What are some of the reasons for this overperformance? Definitely the rebounding of the economy was much quicker than anyone ever anticipated. And at that time, we had made estimates. We were in the middle of COVID, and the economy was very unknown, and we weren't really sure what it was going to look like in the future year, and so we made some good faith estimates. We provided that information at the ballot question. And of course, the economy was very unpredictable, and fortunately, we did receive more than we anticipated. One option, or, excuse me, one example is some stadium district funds. We did not know that we were going to receive those in 2022, and that does count towards our fiscal year spending. And so just one of the reasons why we were over our estimates from 2022. We have some options that we discussed last week with council. We could refund this to the taxpayers by the end of 2023, and then we would also have to reduce our 3.75% total tax to 3.33 in subsequent years. The other option is to appeal to the voters to allow the city to keep these funds, these revenues that we collected, and continue our current tax rate at 3.75 so that we're able to continue with the capital projects that we had initially intended to go forward Some of the projects that could be severely impacted if we don't ask the voters to retain the monies from 2022, neighborhood street resurfacing, traffic safety and bike pedestrian improvements. I think the largest one that we all are very familiar with is the improvements at Santa Fea and Mineral intersection. We have some large federal grants that require a match, and the intention was to use 3A sales tax money to help fund that match at that intersection. The match is about 6 million, and that total project is probably over 20 million by now. But that could severely impact those, that progress that we're making in that intersection. We have some county line improvements, and we have some key city facility maintenance and building replacements that we have planned over the next two to three years. And without this retention of this revenue, that could severely impact some of those plans that we have. At the direction of council last week, we did bring forward a resolution to place a ballot measure on the ballot in November to retain the revenues collected and maintain our existing tax rate per those Tabor requirements. At this time, if you have any questions, be happy to answer.
Council, any questions for staff? Seeing no questions, okay.
I actually want to make a motion to amend that ballot.
We need to have a motion first to amend, so we need to have a.
Let me correct the language.
As this is just a resolution, this is not an ordinance. On second reading, we don't have a public comment period, and that's why we're moving forward, so.
So I'll move to approve ordinance.
Resolution?
Resolution 1012023, referring a ballot question to the registered electors of the city of Littleton, asking the voters to authorize the city to retain and spend all revenues it has received and will continue to receive relating to the 3A, three-thirds of a cent sales and use tax and expend all taxes, grants, and other revenues received in 2022 in excess of its limitation as stated in the ballot question to continue to fund the backlog capital improvement projects that was approved by the voters on November 2nd, 2021.
Second?
A motion and a second by Councilmember Driscoll. Any comments, Council? See, let's go through comments first, and then if you want to make an amendment. Yeah, Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you, Mayor. When 3A passed, it really was the expectations of our citizens that those funds for 3A, the additional funds, would be used for the deferred maintenance or other things like that, including other, maybe some new stuff. But one of the things I always want to be cautious of here is that we don't parse it out so thin that we're really still deferring maintenance. I really think the citizens want us to do the deferred and then the big capital stuff as well. That is the intent of 3A, and I think because it was maybe just an oversight somehow, that this would count with Tabor. I think this, this motion or this resolution is important that we, we do pass it and the citizens understand why it won't be affected by Tabor going forward. So I'm in favor of this.
Councilmember Driscoll?
Yeah, I second that. You know, we're just getting started, so I'm really hoping the citizens watching in the room today and also those people watching on TV, we're, we're really going to transform this city with, with these additional funds. I really hope we can get consensus and move forward and hopefully get this correct on the ballot and get the word out there that this money will not go to waste, and we, we're on a roll. And I keep telling all the people out there, you're, you're not going to recognize this city in about five years. We've got a lot of great things going on. I'm looking forward to being part of it.
Any other comments? Councilmember Bar, then Mayor Protem.
Just wanted to say as well that I'm going to be supporting the motion and maybe potential amendments as well. But I wanted to point out too that I think as other council members have said, that this, the cost to our infrastructure, you know, we're taking at a snapshot in time and, you know, may not have accounted for even things that are coming up now, that our pre-planning is going into things like our stormwater work, which is allowing us to do the engineering and construction of those projects at a faster pace than we normally would. We are in the infrastructure and engineering industry trying to outrun inflation on kind of every scale. This money is not going to go to waste. It is going to go to what the voters approved in 2021. So I'll be enthusiastically supporting it.
Mayor Protem?
Yes, I agree with my colleagues here that we are just getting started, and we've got a lot more work to do. I think it's important, though, that we add to this ballot language a little reminder about what 3A is. So I'm going to propose an amendment, and I, so I'd like to do that now. And I move to amend the ballot question by adding the following language to line 85 after "to be used for improvements such as neighborhood street and sidewalk maintenance and traffic solutions," as was originally approved by the voters.
So there's a motion to amend and second by Councilmember Bar. Any comments or questions on the amendment? Councilmember Valdez?
Regarding the language that's being proposed, this language is not set in stone yet, is it? I mean, we can change it at any time going forward. Do we, do we need amendment to?
Well, it would be set in stone, stone tonight, so.
Oh, that's true, because we're approving it as is.
Deadline for ballot certification is September 8th.
Okay, cool. Yeah, thank you. That is my question. Thank you.
Any other comments on the amendment to change? All right. Seeing no questions, I'm going to open voting for the amendment to approve or not approve. Change it?
Read it again.
Yeah. Yeah, can you read it?
Do you want me to read the word? Would it be in entirety or just what I'm proposing to change?
Entirety?
The whatever we're voting on.
Okay, so I want it to be just "to be used for improvements such as neighborhood streets and sidewalk maintenance and traffic solutions," as was originally approved by the voters in, you know, 3A, like, so it's almost like a parenthetical.
Yeah, Councilmember Valdez?
I'm concerned if we add that, does that limit it just to that language then?
City attorney?
Because 3A was, was, was more broad than that.
Correct. And I think the, the proposed amendment, all that is simply doing is highlighting some of those issues or some of the, those items that our voters voted for. It doesn't constrain the.
So not limited to?
Correct.
Because, because she said "such as." Yeah.
That's a high-level legal term, "such as."
That's a good question.
Therefore.
And such and such.
All right. Any other questions or comments on the amendment to add that specific language? Seeing none, voting is open to amend the resolution.
The vote on the amendment is six to zero. The motion carries.
Okay, now we're back to discussion on the main motion as amended. Are there any other comments on this? Seeing none. I do have just a few comments, and I just wanted to back up and, you know, to our conversation last week. And the reason, you know, I agree with Councilmember Valdez and Councilmember Driscoll on this, that it's really important to put this on the ballot. I know, hey, you sure you want to change your mind? That the reason we're having this discussion is that the alternative to putting this on the ballot is to simply refund all these monies to the voters, taxpayers of Littleton. And like you said, these monies were, the 3A funds was to put into our infrastructure, into maintenance, and that's really important. That's what our voters expect. And to reduce our taxes, the tax down to 3.33 would not allow us to meet those expectations. So it's really important that our voters, if this were to pass tonight and get on the, on the November ballot, that they understand that this is, we're, we're asking them to allow the city to continue doing what they told us they wanted us to do. And so that's really important. I do, I said I do have a, find it very ironic that we are having this broad kind of tax policy discussion based on a constitutional amendment that was brought forward by a convicted felon who committed amongst other crimes, tax fraud. And so it's just.
A point of order. That's, you're going after somebody.
I'm talking about having a tax policy here. No, sorry, Councilmember Valdez, that we are having this broad tax policy discussion on this. I can understand the, the Tabor to ask us to retain the 3A portion that we exceeded, the expenditures there. That, that makes sense, to say, can we keep that 1.1 million dollars that we over, underestimated and brought in? I think the, the difference with this is it's a specific question of Tabor, this section of Tabor adds that punitive portion of it, of. adds that punitive portion of it, of the entire fiscal spending for that entire year. You know, this is not just a nagging spouse, as one commenter said before. This is a spouse that is trying to kidnap you, lock you in the basement, and suffocate you, basically, strangle you. And so I think it's important that our voters understand that we do not have this flush surplus of cash. This is not a huge excess. This is asking us to not be punished for having a small oversight due to a kind of economic weird times with COVID. And so I think it's really important that we have this on the ballot and that voters understand how important this is to our city, that they approve this ballot question to allow us to keep those funds. So I will, I will be supporting that tonight. So with that, I'm going to open the voting. We far ahead of comments.
I want to follow up.
What's your comment, counsel?
I was just going to say regarding the 3A, that this should be separated from the Tabor. But if you remember, a couple weeks ago, we had a conversation, if we had too many tax things on the ballot, that the citizens were likely to vote no, which tells me that if it weren't, if citizens didn't have the opportunity because of Tabor to vote no, councils everywhere would just be putting all kinds of tax increases. So I don't think Tabor is necessarily a bad thing. But in this case, this is an additional thing that our citizens have already approved. So that's why I'm voting for this outside of Tabor.
Great. All right, I'm going to open the voting. If this recognizes my finger, there we go. There we go.
The vote on the main motion as amended is six to zero. The motion carries.
Yes, you want to, we have a request for a five-minute recess here.
Three minutes.
A three-minute recess? Okay. Well, recess for a few minutes here.
Let's hope we don't overestimate that.
Nice read.
Get ready for the Roman candle walk, which I'm...
All right, back from our short recess here. We are moving on to item 10 of our agenda, ordinances on second reading and public hearings. We have one tonight, ordinance 14-2023, ordinance on second reading, amending Title I, Chapter 9, Section 4 of the Littleton Municipal Code relating to council member compensation. So we've had several study sessions on this, and come into council tonight for a final vote here. I'll turn it over to the city manager and tell us about it.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this is the culmination of several study sessions, and I, with that, I believe I will just turn it over to our human resources director, Tracy Hooker, who can give an overview, kind of a recap of the conversations council has had and the subjects that could affect decisions. And after that, we will seek your decision. Tracy?
Good evening, counsel. As stated, tonight we have a ordinance on second reading to amend Title I, Chapter 9, Section 4 of the Littleton Municipal Code relating to council compensation, ordinance 14. As a recap of our staff analysis, council member salaries were last increased in 2015. Staff reviewed compensation to include salary and benefits options for council, which were presented on April 18th and June 20th, study sessions. In those meetings, council expressed interest in using AMI, or area median income, as defined by the U.S. Department of Housing and Urban Development, as basis for the salary calculations. And council also expressed interest in offering city-sponsored health insurance enrollment at full cost to council members. The area median income for Arapahoe County, including the Denver-Aurora-Laguard areas, is currently $86,900 per capita. Area median income is the midpoint of a region's income distribution, meaning that half of the households in the region earn more than the median and half earn less. You'll see on the chart here on this slide that the AMI calculations are proposed for mayor, mayor pro tem, and council members between 20% and 30% of AMI. This indicates a monthly salary increase between $348 to $823, dependent upon position based on May 2023 rates. Council also expressed interest in offering health insurance premiums. So this slide outlines the current cost for 2023 part-time employee rates and the amount that council members would pay monthly if opted into insurance offerings. Are there any questions?
One clarification, Mayor, or I guess just to underscore. The proposal contained in the ordinance regarding health insurance benefits would be that the council member pay the entire premium and would not have any city cost contributed. So there would be no city cost impact for that, just in case we weren't quite clear there.
Seeing no question?
Is this in perpetuity? In other words, we're going to base everything off of the AMI for that given year, or... Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, Councilmember Driscoll, I saw that, too, because this is, and it says almost annually that it's adjusted. And so I'm going to have an amendment that regards that.
Any other questions? Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, I just want to ask a quick question. So were any other benefits considered, such as education benefits, health? Obviously, we considered health benefits. What are some other benefits that the city staff currently, you know, use from the city?
Yes, one of the other items that we discussed is potential of opting into our retirement plans, and council did not wish to move forward on that. But that was one area that we looked at as well.
Any other questions? All right, as this is a ordinance on second reading, I'm going to open up public comment portion at 8:10, just like before. Public have three minutes to address this very specific topic here. I'll call all people that have signed up, talk about this. We have one person signed up, Pam Chadbourne.
So counsel, a couple concerns I have about this proposal. The first one, and I guess I'm going to preface this with, Littleton for a long time has had an organization chart, and it shows the people of Littleton, and then it shows the electeds, and then it shows the city manager and staff, and the attorney and judge to, you know, talk about direct employees. I'm 1/45,000 of those people, and so you work for us. And I think that's different than staff, because you're elected. You're elected to represent, and I'm going to say, not us and not your own opinions. You're elected to perform due diligence on our behalf, and the city's behalf, and the future city for decades to come. So when we talk compensation, I guess, I'm not aware in my life of having talked compensation without being aware of what my job is and what my role is. And that hasn't been brought up. It hasn't been brought up, to my knowledge, in the study sessions I've heard. What do we get from you for paying you this increase? I would like to hear about that, counsel, and I bet, you know, that's not going to come out tonight. But it seems to me, and you've heard me talk about this before, first principles, that in the United States, government exists to serve the best interest in the general welfare of the people. You take an oath to uphold these documents. You say a pledge to a flag that holds those principles as primary. And I want to see you acknowledge your duty to, not your opinions and desires. You're here to do due diligence for us based on data and evidence, to understand what the impacts are of proposals on the city and the people for decades to come. I want to see you take your jobs in your hands and say, yes, for this raise, I am going to do that job. So that's one comment. And the other is, so I don't consider employees of the city manager. We have a city manager, a city council, form of government. These are two inherently different roles, as I just described. Staff's job is to understand the technical basis of the evidence that they're giving you. And we all need that to understand the income, the outcomes of what the decisions are. But you have a different role, and again, that's to perform due diligence and to check and balance. America is based on separation of powers and checks and balances, and I believe that to my core. And I want to see that reflected in what you feel your obligations are and what you're going to give us for this raise. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chadbourne. Is there anybody else who would like to come down and speak? Frank?
Good evening, city council. My name is, is the clock running?
I have the clock here. The clock there stopped, and your name is still Frank Atwood.
Wonderful. And I'm glad to see the public sees it the same. And I'm just going to comment that the, I'm intrigued, and this comes back to Parkinson's, one of Parkinson's laws that I mentioned earlier, the amount of time city council has focused on their wages versus the amount of time this evening discussing the candlelight walk and how, what the candlelight walk being $50,000 versus city council, and just intrigued about the time allotted. And I think that's a minute by my watch, so thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else wish to speak? Seeing no one, I'm going to close the public comment at 8:15. Counsel, any further questions that we have? Any comments? Anyone up to making a motion?
I'd like to move to approve ordinance 14-2023, an ordinance on second reading, amending Title I, Chapter 9, Section 4 of the Littleton Municipal Code related to council member compensation.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve ordinance 14. Counsel, any comments? Are you going to make an amendment? You want to make comments first and then come back? And just let's everyone have a chance to talk.
I was going to comment first.
Yeah, perfect, great.
Thank you, Mayor. Regarding the time that we've spent on this thing, I am a little surprised on how fast we are moving this through. While it's not fast when you consider months, but there's other ordinances that we've had in the system waiting, such as the safety and the mediums, that citizens do care about. That one should be moved ahead of this one. I don't know why the council compensation has been moved ahead of the medium safety. So I'm a little concerned about how we're taking this one to ourselves, because I, raise your hand if you've had council or citizens say, you guys, we need to approve more money for you guys. That has just never happened. But we have other things that have been more important, though. You raised your hand. I saw that.
Yeah, I heard someone say that, so.
They live in Littleton. Anyway, I do think that we had other ordinances that, for whatever reason, we're still sitting on. We received that other ordinance that citizens do care much about months ago, and we haven't done a thing with it, other than we're having yet another study session. That's it. Comment.
The comments? Councilmember Driscoll?
Yeah, you know, this, unfortunately, I missed the first reading, so I couldn't say much at that time. But I think I made it pretty clear during the study session that the average median income is not the way to structure a small raise for city, for the city council. I mean, I can envision the average median income being 120 grand in 20 years, and all of a sudden, you know, this is a full-time job for the mayor and mayor pro tem. It was never meant to be that. This is a three-and-a-half-hour-a-week job. If you want to put more into it, as most of us do, we attend ribbon cuttings, and we attend coffees and whatever. But that's what we signed up for. And I'm just afraid this thing gets way out of hand, way too fast. And I'm going to wait to hear Jerry's amendment. But again, I'm just not happy with the way this came together. And to Jerry's point, you know, this came way too fast, and it seemed like we discussed it. AMI was thrown out there, and we discussed it, and then all of a sudden, here we are on second reading. So I'll look forward to hearing the amendment.
Just add, I think, more, most council members spend more than three and a half hours on council a week. But Councilmember Milliman?
I said that.
Hey, thank you so much for that, Tracy. I appreciate your presentation. I will be supporting this, this vote tonight. I look, I look at how the demographics of our city are changing, and most, and we do put a lot of hours in. Some people put in more than others, and it depends on the week. And then this can become sort of a de facto second job, if you will. And folks that may want to serve the citizens of this community perhaps look at it and say, you know, for the amount of hours I'm going to be putting into this, I just don't know that I can, I can, I can really do this. So I think to be able to attract younger folks potentially who are not... be able to attract younger folks potentially who are not retired, who in the past, it's been more heavy retirees, I think, on the city council, not that that's a bad thing, but I think that to create some more diversity with the council makeup, I will be supporting this, this amendment, this proposal.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Great. So I just want to be clear on something. If this was about my direct compensation right now, I would be totally against it, because that's super unethical and kind of gross. But I want to be clear, this is, this is really thinking about future city councils. So, you know, councilmember Valdez, I agree with you in the, in the sense of, I know what I signed up for. But there's a whole group of potential folks out there who I think have financial limitations, and we don't hear their voice, and they're not able to represent a really strong perspective. And we can't get that with thinking about them. So I want to support this, because I really want to support the future leaders and the future people who are going to be on council.
Thank you. Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, I just wanted to second that point that, yeah, if this were about my compensation, I would not be voting in favor of it. And to the mayor pro tem's point, this is about affording opportunities for folks who are working, we don't know what wages they're working at, quite frankly. It's very difficult to find a target or a reasonable metric by which to base council compensation off of, other than just feelings. But area median income is, quite honestly, one of the better tools to use for this, because it does change and fluctuate with time. And the percentages that we allotted to the compensation for the various roles on council, I think, do reflect the actual number of hours that we individually are putting into the job. But also, to a public commentator's post, that is the number of hours that you can expect a percentage of one's time to be put into the job, whereas that was not necessarily tied to anything meaningful or concrete in any way. So I appreciate the way that we're constructing it, not just the dollar figure. I think compensation for, you know, folks serving in public, in a, any sort of board or other public kind of capacity, do need that compensation in order to piece together the finances of their lives, quite honestly. So I would also, I'm going to be supporting this, and I'd also like to proffer an amendment, but I know councilmember Valdez has something he'd like to offer up to.
Thank you. Councilmember Valdez?
Well, thank you. A couple of things I did here is that council in the past have been made up of mostly retired people. That's just totally false. That's just totally false. We only have one council member, and that's councilmember Grove, in this council who's retired. And I think the straw man argument that there's people out there would do this if they could get paid more money, if only, I, I would love to see that evidence. But with that in mind, I would like to make an amendment. Let's see, under Section One, Paragraph A, omit the entire sentence starting on line forty that states, or, or, let's see, these rates shall be automatically adjusted. I would like to strike that one. So that is my motion, and let me know when we need a second first.
We have, have a motion and a second from councilmember Driscoll. So just to clarify, you want to strike, starting on line forty, these rates shall be automatically adjusted based on January first of ensuing years according to the area median income for one person based upon the percentage set forth above. Just that one sentence, or was it?
Yes, that's what you, yeah, that's, I think that's what you just wrote. Yeah, it's, it's, sorry. Yes, it starts on line forty, which is page one, these rates, and it ends on page, on line forty-two, set forth above. It's that entire sentence.
Just that one sentence, and then, and then if rates decrease from one year, that should, that remains in there?
Everything else, yeah.
Okay.
So we have a motion.
Yeah, we have a motion and a second. Council, comments, questions for, for councilmember Valdez or for, for staff regarding this? Councilmember Barr?
I'll be voting against it. I think the idea behind having a rate that adjusts itself over time is not so to necessarily assume that rates are going, that the AMI is going to constantly continue to inflate. But in order that this measure does not get brought back forth before council to update compensation, this is a way of being able to automatically do it and stay within some reasonable guardrails. So I'll be voting against it.
And then, Councilmember Milliman?
I have a question. What if you changed it instead of every year, every other year?
We could certainly do that.
I mean.
I don't, I don't think that makes sense. I mean, you're still getting to the same point. What, what I think Jerry and I are concerned about is this constant adjustment. And I understand what Steve is saying, but this constant adjustment of going up, 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 you know, when the job has been the same job for the last forever, the city has not grown, the city's still under fifty thousand people, the job is the same. So this idea of more extra work, more this, more of that, again, we are only required to be here three and a half hours every week. I know we all put in more time than that, but this job is still the same job that future or past councils have done, and future councils will do. Unless, and to, to one of the speakers out there, unless you're, you're telling me our jobs are changing significantly to justify this increase, I would go along with it. But I just don't think this is the right way to justify a, a small increase. To Jerry's amendment, I, I don't like that. I'm going to make an amendment also once, after we go on this one.
I had two questions, one for councilmember Valdez. Is the goal then to set it at the twenty twenty, whatever year, twenty twenty-four AMI, and that's what it's set at, then moving forward?
It's, it's, sorry. Yeah, the, the purpose of, of my making that amendment is because if this ordinance, if passed by council, it's compensation as written, it will increase virtually every year. And as it even says that, ensuing years in there, that it will be adjusted. So that means every year, council compensation is going to go up. Council doesn't even have to vote on it. It'll just automatically happen, unless council were to take the action to say, no, we're not going to take it this year. But my, my, my point of doing this is, is if councils think they should have an increase, and it should happen time to time, I'm not against, I'm not opposed to have an increases, not at all, especially in your case, where you were erected, elected as a direct mayor. I think responsibilities are more now than ever. So I can see the time that you're spending there. My, my concern is that council should have to go to the citizens and let them know, justify to them that they are going to do it. Now, I think back in, it was in two thousand fifteen or whenever, when the citizens said, we could go ahead and make these adjustments. The charter said, we used to have to go to request the citizens to approve, but we no longer have to do that. Citizens left it up to us. And this is what happens. When the citizens leave it up to us, we're just saying, oh, we're just going to let it happen automatically now. I, I think that's the wrong way to go. That's why I'm moving, removing, Councilmember Driscoll, the automatic adjustment every January. I, I think that is just not the way to go. This council seems to want to spend money more than it does want to cut, and this is certainly not cutting money. And that concerns me, that we're just, we're adding more money to the budget.
So just, just to clarify, so the, the effect of this would be to set it at AMI of next year, and it would not change until a future council decided to, to change it and whatever.
To whatever they want to change it at that time.
I just, I'm just trying to figure out what the ramification of that would be.
Instead of automatic.
Okay. Councilmember Milliman?
Another question. Are there, are there other councils in this area that are kind of based, do they do the same thing, or is this kind of unique to Littleton?
So Fort Collins went to a similar model in the past year or so, of basing this off of AMI as well. And we do have another one that was based off CPI.
I think Arvada was one.
I was thinking Aurora. We did gather some different data. So, so it fluctuates how it's being measured, but it is being looked at annually more, more frequently than we've seen previously.
I will, I will chime in with the discussions that I've had with various mayors about how their, a lot of councils are having this kind of discussion because it, it comes up. And I think one of the ideas is to have it set, you know, automatically or tied to something is so, you know, as with Mayor Pro Tem said, you know, it's kind of awkward discussing your own salary and setting it for us. And that's why when I brought this forward was to start it, not, not even the next council, but the, the subsequent council after this new council takes seat next year. So in theory, none of us could be here with that. And so that was this idea, and, and let it go. So councils don't have to have that awkward conversation every, every year or every ten years in Littleton's case here. And so I, I like the idea of setting it to, to something that Councilmember Barr had. Councilmember Driscoll, yeah?
I understand better, Jerry. Thank you for explaining that, and I, I see where you're going with that. So I would be okay with that. I would be a, a set number. I was going to propose doing a twenty-five thousand for mayor, fifty, twenty grand for mayor pro tem, and fifteen for council, just a flat rate. But for this to adjust automatically every year based off AMI, I don't, I, I don't think the city or the citizens.
You're scaring away our guests, Patrick. They're all just walking up.
That's okay. That's okay. I, I don't think this comes up. I mean, last increase was in two thousand fifteen. There's probably a reason for that. It's not awkward asking or looking at a slight pay raise, but again, it has to be justifiable. And right now, this job hasn't changed, in my opinion. It's not justifiable. And therefore, you know, I, I won't vote for the current ordinance, but I will vote for Jerry's amendment.
Councilmember Valdez, you had one final comment?
Yes, one final. Yeah, so our last increase was in two thousand fifteen, and council did have to have that awkward conversation. If, if you can't handle, if we can't handle awkward conversations as why we should get more money, or a council should get more money, then, then maybe we shouldn't be up here. And the, the last increase, as I recall, before two thousand fifteen, was also done, I think it was two thousand five, and before that, it was nineteen ninety-seven. So it does happen. Councils do come forward with reasons why it should be increased. This, this idea that we don't want to have a conversation, so let's make it annually adjusted, I, I think the citizens would not be happy about that. If we put it to a vote, they would probably say no.
Councilmember Milliman?
One more question. How, how much does the AMI fluctuate year to year, or every five years, or every ten years?
I, I don't have that data in front of me, but I can certainly look into it.
Yeah, I'm in the mortgage industry, and it fluctuates more than you think, and that's why I'm so afraid of this, this, this ordinance, because it will fluctuate. I think when I first started the mortgage industry, the AMI was around the forty-five thousand. So in, in thirty years, it's, it's doubled. Now, will it double again in another thirty years? I don't know, but it does fluctuate considerably. It's never gone down, and I don't ever seen it go down. So for those, for that conversation we had in study session, you know, this idea that it might go down, I think is completely false.
Well, if it did go down, it doesn't affect council.
Councilmember Milliman?
Yeah, I, I want to retract my comment about retirees being up here. What I should have said is, I feel like a majority of the people that serve on council have more stable financial means to be able to serve. And I think by, by providing this opportunity, it potentially pulls in more, again, a more diverse, broader group of people that would consider, you know, serving the citizens in this capacity. So, but I see what you're saying, and I see what you're saying, so I struggle.
You must have gotten F in civics.
All right. Just remember, we're discussing the amendment here. So any other comments? All right, we're gonna, I'm going to open the voting on the amendment to strike the sentence, these rates shall be automatically adjusted based on January first of ensuing years according to the AMI for one person based on the percentages set forth above. So a vote yes is to remove that, a vote no is to keep that in.
The vote is two in favor, with councilmembers Barr, Ryden, Schlactor, and Milliman voting no. The motion to amend fails.
All right, we're back to the main motion that has not been amended. Any further? Councilmember Barr?
Yeah, I'd like to make a quick comment and, and make a motion as well. So I had given this consideration with the city manager's office and talked to him about it prior to this evening. But my question that was set to the human resources director around other compensation that staff receive, specifically around education and training, council's already allowed essentially to participate in, you know, kind of National League of Cities, Colorado Municipal League. These things, I think, truly benefit our citizens in our city when we participate in these ways. But for me personally, I actually get more out of, you know, topic-specific or subject-specific types of education, like, for example, knowing more about Lytech housing development. And there's plenty I can do on my own to get there, but there's also a lot of other kind of educational opportunities that our current, our current code or current charter does not necessarily allow for us to access through the city. So as an additional benefit, but not one that would actually increase or change our city's budget in any way, I had discussed it and thought about it, that, you know, having access to the same kind of educational and training benefits that staff do, but not exceeding or expanding that budget, and not necessarily jumping ahead of staff to receive that education or training, I think could be a useful benefit to council members that want to explore subjects or certificates of a certain type that would benefit the citizens. So I would move to amend Title One dash nine dash four by adding subsection C to read, quote, "All council members shall be eligible to participate in the city's tuition reimbursement program for job-related college credit courses, certificate programs, and continuing education according to city guidelines after review and approval by human resources and the city manager, subject to funding availability."
I'll second.
There's a motion and a second by Mayor Pro Tem. Ryden, any, before council, I just want to, can the city manager explain to council what that, that benefit, the staff benefit is that councilmember Barr alluded to? Or Tracy, whoever would be best?
I think, I think I would ask Tracy to explain the benefit, if you have that information at your, your fingertips. We also have that, since we did have some communication from Councilmember Barr, we were able to have that for council, if you'd like to see the current policy or how that, how that works. And so I think, Tracy, if, if you could speak to the benefit, I can then speak to some of the, the budget or how that could work.
Yeah, absolutely. So we currently offer a tuition reimbursement program for regular full-time staff with the city. That includes a reimbursement eighty-five percent of tuition, up to a maximum of three thousand dollars per calendar year. There is a form that staff completes, the HR signs off on. There is a requirement that it is related to your current job to qualify for taking those certifications or course credit. And I do have a copy of the policy, if anyone would like to, like a copy of that.
My comment on the budget would be that the way that that works currently is there's a citywide budget of, I believe it's twenty thousand dollars or so that can be accessed, you know, by those full-time employees applying through their cert, their supervisor, working through, through hu, human resources with, with approval from their department director. And so that funding, I understand, has not been fully used over the past, you know, several years. We might use several thousand, I'm estimating here, but probably, you know, five thousand or ten thousand dollars of that total. We keep the budget of approximately twenty thousand relative level. And I believe councilmember Barr is, is suggesting that that is the same funding source that could be made available to council members as it, if it is available at the time of the request.
Thank you. Council questions? Councilmember Valdez?
Thank you. I think just because there's budget not being used doesn't mean we should find a way to use it. If, if, if a council member wants to have additional education, they have the responsibility to go get it on their own, because we, we do go to training. We have different organizations we belong to that have tremendous educational resources. I think just because a city government hasn't used up all the budget doesn't mean we should go find a way to use it. And that just, that is so crazy thinking to me. I don't, not necessarily crazy, I don't mean crazy, but I, I just don't like that kind of thinking, that we got to spend money because it's already out there. But I just don't like that kind of thinking, that we got to spend money because it's already out there. If we add that with council, that means it will get spent even more. And again, we're finding ways to spend the citizens' money, this council is, instead of trying to save money or to cut money. I'm adamantly against this amendment.
Thank you. Mayor Protem?
Yeah, I think I kind of disagree with that one, Councilmember Valdez. Because if we are training or allowing future city council people to get more training in economics or in ways to save money, I think that could save the city in the future. So let's not like cap the training that's available to folks. And I do agree with you that, yes, there's lots of training that is available through CML and through the National League of Cities. And I think some of those are a little bit limited. And I think, I know, because I've taken several of them, and I still like, I'm like, this is great. I get this, but there's so much more than in-depth thing that I've experienced that I feel like I'm missing. And you've had years of experience on council, so you have that in your pocket, the experience that has helped. And I wonder if there's a way we could expedite future councils to just be armed with more understanding of the job.
You sure, Councilmember Valdez?
Yeah, I brought, I had got lots of experience being on planning commission in the city council. I also had tremendous experience going into both of those, whether it's economics. Some of us have more economics and business experience than others. And it's good to have a mix. But I think it's wrong to tell the citizens, hey, you've elected me, now you got to educate me to pay for my education. I think if you want it, go do what it takes. I realize that we're all not the same, that's as far as knowledge. And that's true for anybody out there. But kind of like the straw menu put out there, there's people out there, they want to do it, but they just don't have the time because they need money in order to do it. We're not all equal with our time and our ability to do things. And we're trying to make it more equal for people with the citizens' money. I think we need to stay away from that. We need to, we need to reduce spending, not keep adding to it. Because the city government is going to have additional increases, whether it's salary or labor, which is the highest. That's going to continue to happen. Now we're adding seven more people to the expense to the city citizens, so.
Thank you. Mayor, or mayor, Councilmember Milliman?
Yeah, I'm struggling with this one because I have to agree with Jerry on this. Like, I know that the money is there, but if it's not being spent, does it go back into the general fund for the next year? I know it's only 20,000. I mean, I shouldn't say it's only 20,000. It's 20,000 versus, you know, 5 million or whatever. But yeah, I kind of, I kind of struggle with this one. I need some more, I need some more info, more thoughts.
Do I see, Councilmember Driscoll, if you're going to say?
Sure, you know, Jerry brings up great points on that. I agree. You know, I'm flabbergasted the way we can just spend money when we finally have it. I think it's really important that we not continue to spend money on raises and on education. We have CML. They do an incredible job. There's so much education out there you can take for free or for a membership rather than to go out there and have to seek it. So again, I will vote no on this one.
Any other comments? I think that this is an interesting thing to add to it. Because I know that we have, council has funds to attend conferences and go to things like that. But there are additional opportunities that maybe people haven't thought of to go through. And I think it's not necessarily to the individual, their benefit, but to help the benefit of the community to go to some different functions that may not be covered by our attending CML or National League of Cities or things like that. I think this is, you know, offered at a lot of places of employment. I know the state offers it. I've never taken advantage of the state doing that, but I think that some people might take advantage of it. I think a lot of people probably wouldn't. I know we have lots of funds available to council for use for things, for doing local events and attending conferences. And I don't think most council members take advantage of those things. So I don't think this is about some nefarious actions of people taking advantage of the city or taking advantage of taxpayers to do that. So I think this is a net benefit. Because if there's something that a council member wants to do and just can't do it because of various reasons, funding being one, I want to have, I want to start from a place of yes where we can say, yes, we can go to these things and not just start off and say no. So I think I, you know, I hear Councilmember Valdez and Councilmember Driscoll's points, very valid points. But I think I'm, what I'm hearing Councilmember Barr say is that there probably would be a net benefit, and Mayor Protem, a net benefit to the community to have council members. So I will support this amendment here tonight. So any other comments before we vote on the amendment? And Councilmember Barr, can you just read the amendment one more time so everyone's aware of it?
Yeah. I move to amend Title 1-9-4 by adding subsection C to read, quote, "All council members shall be eligible to participate in the city's tuition reimbursement program for job-related college credit courses, certification programs, and continuing education according to city guidelines after review and approval by human resources and the city manager, subject to funding availability." Minus all that blah in the middle of the read.
All right, thank you. So we do have a motion and a second to amend this resolution. We can open the voting. A vote four is to add that to section C. A vote against is to keep it as is.
The vote is three in favor and three against. The motion fails.
Okay, thank you. Back to the unamended main motion. Councilmember Valdez?
I have another motion. I have another motion.
Okay. Is the clerk ready? Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay, I'm sorry. I move to amend the main motion under Section 1, Paragraph B, to be omitted in its entirety. That's it.
Okay. Not here in a second, so it's dying for a lack of a second. Any other comments? Councilmember Driscoll, did I hear you say you had an amendment? Do you want to do that before we vote on the main?
Yes, please. I move to amend Section 1, Title 1, Chapter 9. Salaries of Littleton Code is amended to read as follows. Mayor, eliminating the AMI percentile. And mayor would be at 25,000. Mayor Protem is 20,000 and city council's 15,000.
Second.
So there is a motion and a second, and that would be to adjust the Section 1, Table A, just remove the AMI percentiles and add those flat rates in that table?
And it would therefore then not be renewed automatically, which we've already voted on. So I don't know how, we'd have to deal with that.
That would appear to be a conflict in the ordinance.
So as I'm understanding the intent of Councilmember Driscoll's amendment, it's simply to have a kind of a known number, 25, 20, 15, and then no escalations after that?
Correct.
Presumably, future escalations would be decided by city council in another ordinance such as this.
So would it be clear, rather than just adjust the table, it would be adjust the table and remove all the lines 39 through 45? Is that what you intended, Councilmember Driscoll?
Yeah, it is. But I, you know, since we've already voted on removing 39 through 45.
Well, we only voted on one sentence in there. We only voted on, yeah, 40 through 42.
Removing everything from 39 to 40.
So for clarity, if Councilmember Valdez is okay with the change to that amendment, if we could just do that, that year, does that work for everyone? That, all right, we'll strike the lines 39 through 45 on that and just in the table. Have those straight, what did you say, 25, 20, and 15?
Yep.
Council, comments, questions on that? Seeing none? Vote on the amendment to strike the AMI percentage and the automatic adjustments. Vote yes is to approve the amendment and vote no is to keep it as is. Councilmember Driscoll? You're torn, you're torn how to vote, aren't you? You got to think about it.
The vote is two in favor with council members Barr, Ryden, Schlactor, and Milliman. Voting no, the motion to amend fails.
So we're back to the main emotion as unamended yet. Any other comments, questions, or amendments? Okay, Councilmember Valdez, comment?
Thank you, Mayor. You know, serving on council is not because, you know, we don't become members because we want to make money or and to be compensated so that we can do this as almost a full-time job or half our job. You know, we should be doing this because of our love for the city to make it a better city. And I think by turning it into this money thing, it does change on how wonderful Littleton has been. To make it that we're going to do it because other cities do it, we just become one of them. It used to be that Littleton used to be the city that everybody wanted to be, but now we're becoming them. That's it.
All right, thanks. Any other comments? I just wanted to add to it that, you know, to address some of the comments from some of the public here. And I think Mayor Protem mentioned on it, we are not discussing our wages. We're not discussing the next council wages. We're discussing future council wages where, in all likelihood, many of us, if not all of us, will not be on that council. And so we, you know, we hear oftentimes from citizens about, you know, thinking about the future, protecting the future. And I think that's exactly what we're doing. We are doing due diligence, setting policy that makes sense. I know, I agree with Councilmember Valdez, once again, that people, and none of us here, ran because of the compensation. You know, people are very surprised at the lack of compensation that council actually receives. You know, we run for the respect and admiration that we get from our commentators every council meeting here. But the issue is. I am a comedian, yeah. I'm following in the city attorney's footsteps there. But it's unfortunate fact that money is often a reason people do not run, that people are interested in it. And they may not see the benefit of, simply, they do see the benefit of serving their community. But there is, this takes time and effort, and there is a sacrifice. And I think having reasonable compensation is important. And, you know, my, you know, only beef with this is I don't think it goes far enough. I think, you know, a council should be compensated better with this. I know, you know, even, you know, I'm not speaking from my position, but, you know, putting in 20, 30 hours a week and, you know, making 20 or $15,000 a year is not, there's, people don't run. If you look at this November election, we have two uncontested races. I don't know why there weren't more people in there, but I can tell you that, you know, that's, we need to do things to encourage people to step up because right now, there's, that's not what's happening in our community here. This is not the, going to fix it everything, but I think it's a step in the right direction to help. And so I will, will be voting for this despite thinking it's not far enough, but it is a step in the right direction, so. Anything else? I'm going to open the voting. Vote is to approve ordinance 14 as completely unamended, despite our valiant attempts to do so.
The vote is four in favor with council members Valdez and Driscoll. Voting no, the motion carries.
All right, thank you for that. We're right back where we started, you know, an hour ago. All right, item up 11, adjournment with no further business to discuss or pretend to amend. We're adjourned.